Hi, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. When I see all the young, beautiful faces in the audience, I am very, very, very excited to be a part of this amazing evening, where we are going to recognize and pay our respects to some amazing athletes, teachers, students, and the whole of Linden City. I am very grateful to be here. As we call this meeting to order, I'm going to read a statement of adequate notice. In accordance with a public meeting, Act Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th, on January 19, 2023, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. This is a no-smoking area, and by state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and accopon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at the regular scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Here.
Mrs. Fleming?
Present.
Ms. Pino?
Present.
Ms. Rosada-Casada? Ms. Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Armstead?
Present.
Ms. Carrillo?
Ms. Centron?
Present.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Present.
Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes. Would someone make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Rule call? Or do we have any concerns regarding our minutes?
No.
Rule call?
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Abstain.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. Now, I always like this part of a board meeting because I'm always interested in hearing comments from the public. So at this time, I would like members of the public to come up and make a presentation. Now, I would like you to all state your name and address. Even if you have to write it, I would want you to state your names and addresses because we would like to know who you are. So members of the public deciding to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time. No individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of this meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes. On agenda items only. This Board welcomes your comments.
Joanne Padavano, 629 Princeton Road. Last month, I brought up the issue of the difference between baseball and softball coaches, why we have four baseball coaches and three softball coaches. I was given a written explanation that the reason was because baseball has a freshman team, softball does not. As we learned at Tuesday night's meeting, that in fact was not correct. There has not been a baseball freshman team since 2018. I am very disappointed to see in the agenda tonight, on page 52, that the assistant varsity baseball coach who resigned has been replaced by another varsity coach for baseball, given a salary, which he is listed actually, and again, this is nothing against the person, but it's the principle, again, four for baseball, three for softball. The person is listed not only now as getting a salary, but he is also listed as a volunteer. I don't understand, when we brought up this point, if you're going to do that, then we deserve another assistant varsity softball coach that should be getting paid a stipend. And we know we have a volunteer coach right now who has consistently, for the past two years, and this year, freely gives her time to our team. So I'm asking your consideration, and I don't understand, like I said, why it's on the agenda for tonight? Thank you. Sorry, easier to hold it. Good evening. Claudia Dolan, 1309 Thomas Ave, North Brunswick, Linden Education Association Vice President, Math Instructional Coach at School Number Five and School Number Ten. Board President, Dr. Burghammer, I would like to ask permission to speak on two items at once as they are related.
Yes.
Thank you. The first item, an education report, page 30, item number 21. This is regarding the elementary schedule changes. When schedules were adjusted in years past prior to this, a meeting was held in which teachers could see what it would look like. We look forward to seeing a sample schedule. In addition, teacher and student input was not sought out regarding schedule changes. While I realize there were some schedules, I'm sorry, while I realize there were some changes that needed to be made to ensure we are adhering to state guidelines, a committee of stakeholders could have been formed to see how we can best create a schedule that meets the required needs. I noticed that elementary teachers will now be teaching health. Our students deserve well-equipped educators that have undergone high-quality professional development. I'm curious as to what research was used as the basis to make these changes and ensure they are best or high-leverage practices to support and increase student learning. What steps is the Board taking before June to ensure staff is trained and prepared to teach health come September, especially considering curriculums aren't being updated until the summer? The next item is education report, page 36, item number 28, regarding standards-based grading. Standards-based grading, which is currently being used at the elementary level, focuses on learning and helps increase achievement. This grading is based on a demonstration of mastery where traditional grading focuses primarily on work successfully completed. Item number 28 focuses on moving away from standards-based grading for the 2023-2024 school year at the elementary level. Again, I'm curious as to what research was used as the basis to make these changes and ensure they are the best or high-leverage practices to support and increase student learning. What steps is the Board taking before June to ensure staff is trained and prepared to utilize this way of grading come September? Thank you.
Do you want to respond?
Yes, let me just respond on the first point. And the question was, what reference do we have to do those changes in the administrative, I'm sorry, the instructional minutes? The reference is the New Jersey 18A law that requires elementary grades 1 through 5 to have 150 minutes of health or PE a week. In our current program this year, we don't have 150 minutes, so I feel we're out of compliance with the law. As we go into next year, the move to essentially, it's the same master schedule as we've had in the past, except that some wind time has been converted to health time. So we will certainly be preparing the health curriculum for those teachers that will be teaching it. It is for any teacher before, I believe it's 2018, they have the ability with their elementary licenses to teach health, just like they could teach any other subject. But we will certainly make sure that people are prepared to teach it in the fall.
Good evening, y'all. Rob Mangell, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LEA President, LHS High School Teacher. Madam President, may I have your permission to speak on two separate agenda items as they are related?
Yes, you.
I'd like to speak on items 19 and 20 from the education report, page 22, honoring and congratulating and recognizing the Teachers and Educational Service Professionals of the Year here in the district. I get to stand up as their local president and represent them on a daily basis, and it is an honor and a pleasure to do that. These folks represent some of the best staff that we have in our district, a district that has truly exemplary staff. These folks continue to shine, and it's an honor and a pleasure to represent them, and they deserve every bit of recognition that they are getting tonight. If nobody else would like to go, can I speak on one more thing? Thank you. Education Report number 18, page 21. In addition to the work that I do with the Linden Education Association, I am also the National Honor Society Advisor at the high school. Seeing the two names listed there makes me incredibly happy as they are members of our National Honor Society. Wonderful examples of the best of Linden High School, and it's an honor and a pleasure to know them and get to work with them on a daily basis. So, what's up? Thank you.
Anyone else would like to make a comment? Any online?
No.
Okay. So now we're going to move to our next agenda item or superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, as you can see with the balloons and the festivities, that we're going to be doing a lot of honoring to folks that deserve the recognition. Our plan here is to go into our presentations first, and then after we're done with that, I'll continue with my superintendent's report. Our plan here this morning, I'm sorry, this evening is, we're going to kind of deploy. Ms. Perkins is going to be calling people up and describing what we're honoring. Mr. Olivero is going to be moving people in and out of the camera frame, giving out the certificates. We will have a Board of Education person at the, for the pitchers, and also the coaches and principals who may be here as well. My role, I will jump into the pitcher. We have some principals who are either out sick or unavailable this evening, so as the Teachers of the Year and others are in for the pitcher, we don't want you to not have an administrator, so I'll jump into your pitcher if your principal is not here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Perkins, and we'll start our recognition.
I want everyone to know that this year would be our first virtual yearbook. So when you go up there, make sure and look good because this picture is going to last forever.
This is the first person up from the board. She's going to get in the first picture. I think she's going to call the...
Good eve... Good evening. Am I on? Good evening, everyone. It's truly a pleasure to stand here. As Dr. Tomazik stated, that we are going to call everyone up, and you will go over to the backdrop. It is one of those moments where we get to just say thank you for a job well done, not only to our teachers, our support staff, but also our students. And it's for different types of achievements. We're talking about academics, we're talking about athleticism, we're talking about accolades that have been achieved here in the Linden Public School District, and we are so thankful. So when you are called up, you will receive a certificate. We have goodie bags for some of you, and more importantly, make sure you smile nice and wide for the photo. We are going to start with the Governor's Educator of the Year recognition. I'm going to ask that Board Member, Ms. Pino, comes up. She is the Chair of the Education Committee, and she will help with giving out the certificates. Each year, our school district participates in the Governor Education of the Year recognition program, and we are pleased to acknowledge our teachers and support staff. Thank you for being a model of excellence. Your influence on our stakeholders is invaluable. You will receive a second certificate from the New Jersey Department of Education, signed by Acting Commissioner of Education, Dr. Alan McMillan, and a gift bag filled with treats. Additionally, teachers have been invited to a morning for all Union County recipients on May 23rd at Keene University. You get the rest of, you get that day off, so enjoy it. The certificates you'll be receiving from the Linden Public Schools District is signed by our Interim Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Tomazik, and our Board President, Dr. Burghammer. When I call your name, I will start by schools, please, principals, and the teacher, and then the educational service person, please come on up. We are going to start with school number one, and we have Ms. Diaz, the principal. Congratulations to teacher James Harper and educational service professional Shirley Bartholus. School number two, we have the teacher, Joanne Mason, and educational service professional Patricia Kawalski. Kawalski. Mr. Fingerlin is not here. Okay. Congratulations, okay. Dr. Tomazik is here? School number four, Dr. Olivero, and the teacher is Nicole Adenasio and the educational service professional Donna Nugent. Congratulations. School number five, Dr. Scamadella is not here this evening. The teacher is Danielle Shad and the educational service professional Laura Valencio. School number six, Mr. Mastriano is not here. The teacher is Kelly Kinney and the educational service professional Christopher Dreha. School number eight, Ms. Rodriguez is not here. The teacher is Brenda Orlando and the educational service professional Blossom Dunn. School number nine, Dr. Plummer. The teacher is Michael Clark, and the support staff member is Angela Currit. School number 10, Mr. Walker. And our, the teacher is Alexandra Day, educational service professional Larissa Cupka. All right, so now we have McManus Middle School, led by Mr. Walters, who's not here this evening, but it is truly my pleasure to welcome and say congratulations to teacher Fatin Sumreen and the educational service professional Stephanie Lizenski. Congratulations. Next, so Middle School led by Ms. Long. The teacher is Eugene Napoleon, educational service professional Lori DeChee Arrow. Linden High School led by Mr. Kuntz. The teacher is Anna Zua Tuhaskiba and the educational service professional Shamona Patterson. Now, we will move to students in winter sports. We are excited about team members' tenacity, athleticism, and sportsmanship. Thank you to VP and Acting Athletic Director, Mr. Firestone, for your leadership. Yes, ma'am. We are now going to ask Board Member, Ms. Armstead, to please join us. As we learned that when she was in high school, she was the captain of the cheerleading team for both the fall/winter sports. And while I know you may not be speaking, if I need to have you, you don't need the microphone. So, get ready to cheer, and you are going to stand in as we call up our boys' basketball team. They won the Group Four North Two State Sectional Championship. They finished with a final record of 24 and 7 and were ranked 14th in the state of New Jersey. Congratulations to the boys' basketball team. And we will start by calling up the coaches, Anthony Dreha, Desmond Wade, Michael Campo, Jeff Wade, and Brian Bor... Gorin. Please come on up. With every successful team, we have basketball managers, and we'd like to say thank you for all that you've done to Asia Hickman and Ari Calderon. All right, so now we are calling up our players. Ashton Armstead, Jacai Burnham, Stephen Cardy, Darnell Derison, Shane Hargrove, Jalen Hodge, Elijah Motley, Idris Mohammed, Hassem Nadir, Elijah Patterson Butler, Nasir Robinson, Gregory Seabrook, Samir Skipworth. Samir Skipworth. Taquan Thomas. And Jalil Turner. Congratulations. Thank you. Now, we are going to call up our girls' basketball team. Our girls' basketball team is the Valley Division Conference Champions. They won their first conference championship since 1994, almost 30 years ago. Congratulations. The coaches of the girls' basketball team, please come up. James Harper. O'Quana Johnson. Joseph Russo. And Richard Began. The girls' basketball managers, thank you Brianna Navarez and Azaya Mathis. And now, our team. Jaden Boyd. Jayla Boyd. Olivia Collier. Lily Estrada. Ciara Gorham. Jada Gorham. Zahira Kelly. Noma Asigulu. Hannah Baverty. Devra Vergon. And Regine Winston. Congratulations. Board Member Ms. Centron, may you please go over to the backdrop. Now, we are going to recognize two of our swimmers. Two of our swimmers qualified for the NJ SIAA State Champion Swim Meet. This is the third time ever that Lyndon High School students have been qualified. Tonight, Assistant Swim Coach Rebecca Rotola, please come up. As you represent your team. We'd like to say congratulations to Peta Jarzab and Philip Salik. Peta, we also like to say congratulations because you won the 100 freestyle at the Union County Championship Tournament. Job well done. Thank you. Board Member Ms. Thomas, may you please stand up. We are now going to recognize our boys' winter track. Matthew Shipe is the assistant coach. Thank you for representing the team. I'm told that Robbie Smith won the Group Four State Championship in the high jump and tied the school record with a jump of 6 feet 6 inches. Congratulations. Robbie couldn't be here this evening. But, Mr. Firestone, you said you're gonna smile. Board Member Mr. De La Cruz, may you please come over. And now, we are going to recognize members of, uh, member of the wrestling team. Our head coach, Alvaro Fernandez. Thank you for representing the team. This is truly a pleasure to talk about Leila Soto. Yes, yes. Leila won the NJ SIAA North Two Regional Championship at 138 pounds. It gets better. While we are almost closing out Women's History Month, it is my pleasure to say thank you because you've made history. You are the first at Lyndon High School to be the first girl region champion. Congratulations. You also are the first female girl state tournament qualifier champion. You're doing great things, young lady. Congratulations. The last time a student qualified was in 1997. You rock, female, keep it up, all right? Good job. You go, girl. Board President Dr. Burkhammer, may you please come on over. It's a great segue. Now, we are going to recognize, and it is stated in the agenda packet, two students for achieving the highest academic rating for their class. Both students will be honored at the 38th Annual Recognition Breakfast for Outstanding Scholars on Monday, May 15th, at the Embassy Suites by Hilton in Berkeley Heights. The second ranking student is going to Isabella Gonzalez. Congratulations. You'll take a picture? All right, now, our number one ranking student, the highest GPA in the Lyndon Senior Class of 2022-23, goes to Hager El Wasahih. Congratulations, Hager. Hager, please remain there. I'm pleased to announce, and we like to say again, job well done, for being appointed to the Lyndon Zoning Board by Mayor Armstead last month. Yes, you are the youngest person ever named to be on the board. We've looked at your resume. You have an extensive resume thus far. You serve as the commander of the Lyndon High School ROTC, Student Council President, former National Honor Society Officer, and we know that you play an active role in fundraising, programming, and several projects to ensure that Lyndon High School and Lyndon is well represented. Thank you. Now, at this time, Dr. Burkhammer, she stated that, uh, we have to give another presentation, another award. And this goes to a phenomenal student who shows up and shows out with her expertise over the equipment at every board meeting. Student Erica Hernandez, please stand up. Erica, we know that you could be anywhere as a high school student on a Tuesday and Thursday every month, but you show up here. You show up, you show out, you're punctual, and more importantly, you're reliable. And we thank you for your commitment and your service. So, smile and keep doing great things. We appreciate you, Erica. Our last recognition, I'm going to ask that Ms. Fleming please stand up. I do believe, and we've talked about this, that this last recognition is going to be dear and near to your heart, and, and many of us too, but you've walked these steps. I'd like to call up student Deanna Lescoffler. Deanna, thank you. Not only are you a senior and you're in the NJ ROTC and an IB student, a foster student, and you put your thoughts into action. Deanna has spoke up and she has produced. And now, we have a legislative bill created because of the work and the action that you put forth to ensure that the sibling bond of foster students continue to grow strong, healthy, and more importantly, just recognized. So, thank you for what you've done. This is an amazing recognition. And that will conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. As we reset, I certainly invite everyone to stay, but we understand if you have other things to do, we won't be offended if you have to go on to those items while we pause before we continue. That's what those balloons are over there for, for family pictures.
Ms. Perkins.
They're so far away.
I know. You made me wanna cry. You were so good.
I told you, I told you.
I love you in that blue. We match, but I don't look in light.
You look terrific in that.
You're looking good with the red and the blue, it's doing it.
Okay, now.
It's doing it now.
I'm trying.
Don't hurt him at the board.
All right.
Yes. Yes. So, they gave me this, send my little badge, congratulations. So, when is government, when's the last governance, what, five? One, two, three, four?
I think it's supposed to, isn't it?
Oh, my God. There was a woman.
It was one, two, three, yeah, there was a four.
That's what they signed me up for. I don't know when it starts though. Yeah, I thoroughly knew. You know, my knucklehead brother, I'm like, he's...
Thank you, everyone. You can continue to take your pictures. We'll continue with the superintendent's report. Please continue to enjoy the festivities. I'd like to bring the board's attention to education number seven. In this item, I just bring attention that next year, we have two snow days in the calendar, not three as we previously discussed. In education number 23, for the time allotments for elementary schools, there was a concern that because the special classes, math, I'm sorry, music, art, world languages, technology, that it said 30 minutes, there was a concern that we had reduced those times from our schedule uses this year. That's an illusion. The educational minutes are, from the student's perspective, average per week. On the elementary schedule, the special courses, gym, art, music, world language, and technology are in a six-day schedule. All other subjects are on a five-day schedule. So, in order to present that as a weekly time allotment, we had to take the number of minutes that those courses would meet over the year divided by 36 weeks, and that's why it looks smaller. But on the weekly schedule, we're still using those 40 minutes to provide the regular classroom teachers their prep, as is outlined in the contract. On education item number 36, are the snow payback day... On education item number 36 are the snow payback days for Friday, April 21st, and Friday, May 26th. June 22nd will remain our last day for students and will also be the high school graduation date. We will be going out after this is approved this evening and making sure that all of our parents know that Friday, April 21st, and May 26th will not be a day of school. Personnel number 28, we bring attention to the fact that we, for the remainder of this year, are upping the per diem substitute pay to $200 a day, this in an attempt to attract more resources to meet our substitute needs. We have a spring break upcoming. Next Thursday, we have an early dismissal day, and we will go on spring break, and we will return from spring break on Monday, April 17th. We had some disturbing news today. I believe when we talked about the initial budget that we had submitted, we knew that our health plan, that we had been paying out more in claims than the insurance companies were getting in dollars. And we knew and predicted that because of that, that our renewal rates on the market would be higher than they were previously. We budgeted for that, but we found out today that some of the proposal by Etna to renew were well beyond what we had predicted, and we had already been pretty liberal on what we thought it would be. It was almost to the fantastic. So we are going to be inviting our insurance broker to speak with the finance committee next month, because if we do have to go to another plan that's equal to or better than, but at a more reasonable price, then we will have to act at the next meeting so that we have the 60 days needed to do such a move. We don't want to do that. We have directed our broker to go back and try again and come back with a more reasonable number, but I did want to introduce that as an issue that came up today, and obviously, it's a critical issue for all of our staff. We still have our initial budget under review by the county office. We submitted it. They have sent back some questions here and there, but we do not yet have it approved, but we have been checking with them, and they're still looking at all the aspects that they want to look at. Our return to Genesis is approaching a key milestone. We expect within the coming weeks that we will have Genesis fully loaded and back up in dual mode with OnCourse so that we can start the next year's scheduling in Genesis. And as different modules become online, hopefully allow for those areas where OnCourse is less robust to allow others to start using the functionality of Genesis, as they always have been. We will completely turn over to Genesis once the school year is over. We can't do it right now because things like attendance and grading have to stay in the system until we're done in June. On April 27th, the upcoming agenda, we have two very important items that will be on the agenda. We'll have to have a public hearing on our final budget for fiscal year '24, that's '23-'24 school year, and we will have our non-tenured reappointments for teachers and administrators who are non-tenured. Coming up in May is the state assessment start for all of our schools that are in testable grades, and also at Linden High School, the advanced placement and the international baccalaureate testing will start as well. I'd like to honor the four individuals that we have this evening for retirement. First, we have Leon Deveraux, who started his teaching career as an art teacher in 1997. Mr. Deveraux has been teaching art for the past 25 years at Linden High School, the only school that he has been at all of his time. Carol Dennis has worked in the Linden Public Schools for the past 21 years as a paraprofessional. Carol has been at school six since her first day here in Linden. Lee Gaskins started his teaching career as an art teacher in 1993. Mr. Gaskins has been teaching art for the past 30 years at Linden High School. And finally, Teresa Kalin started her teaching career in 2005. Ms. Kalin taught basic skills at school four, kindergarten at school five, and is currently teaching second grade at school number 10. To Teresa, Lee, Carol, and Leon, we thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families of Linden. On behalf of the Board of Education, we wish you all the best. Please enjoy your retirement. Finally, I do have some sad news to relay. We've had two people who have been associated with our school district who have passed away. First, Lydia Moore. Lydia started her career with the Linden Public Schools in 1968. During her tenure, Ms. Moore taught social studies at McManus Middle School and Linden High School until her retirement in 1996. Secondly, and this information is very raw to all of us who have known her, sadly, today Dawn Beviano passed away. Dawn was a Board of Education member from May 2007 to December 2019. As well as being a member during periods of time, she was also the board vice president. I think if you didn't know Dawn Beviano, let us, her friends, tell you that she was kind, friendly, very funny. She approached problems with common sense. She was very unpretentious. She was a wonderful mother, wife, and certainly a friend to all of us. We will simply say that we will miss her very much. Madam President, that completes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Tomasi. Our next agenda item is our attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I am presenting two items to the board for approval tonight. The first is an MOA between the board and the Linden School Administrators and Supervisors Association. Happy to announce that the negotiations committee and the association have agreed to terms pending ratification from the board on a new four-year contract, so I hope that'll be approved tonight. And then item two, we did not discuss on Tuesday. This just came up today. We need to modify the minutes from the February 2023 and the January 2023 meetings. The minutes incorrectly stated that items under the attorney report were being presented at my recommendation and at the interim superintendent's recommendation. The interim superintendent doesn't really have anything to do with the attorney's reports, so those minutes should have stated or reflected that those items came on my recommendation and my recommendation only. So we're going to amend that if you approve it tonight. So those are the two items, and with that, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve items one and two on the attorney report.
Motion to approve items one and two on the attorney report?
Second.
Do you have any discussions regarding these two motions before we move to a vote? No discussions. Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Our next agenda item is our education report.
Good evening. Education Committee recommendation of interim superintendent of school and assistant superintendent presents the following motion of Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve one through. Thirty-nine. Do I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Since we have no discussion, would you do a roll call, please, sir?
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Our next agenda item is our personnel report.
Personnel Committee, upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. As for items through one through 40 for approval.
Any discussion? Seeing that we have no discussion, would you do a roll call, sir?
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead. And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Our next agenda item, our finance report.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I ask approval for one through 29. Ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing that we have no discussion, roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Next agenda item, buildings and grounds.
The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I do ask for a second. Approval one through 10. Yeah, one through 10. I'm out of my mind. I can't even get these papers. So one through 11? Yes, one through 11.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing that we have no discussion, we move for a roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
I approve one through seven. I have to abstain on eight, and I approve nine through 11.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
I would like to recuse myself from items seven through nine, and yes to all other agenda items.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Last agenda item, planning and policy report.
The Planning and Policy Committee, upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, present the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one, the school food service program, and item two. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Our next agenda item, once again, my favorite comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting. Members of the public will be limited to speak on items for three minutes, on agenda items only.
My name is Craig Hallen. I live in 121 T. Donaldson Place. I learned of this thing the other night at the Board of Education meeting. The girls' softball team is doing a charity event April 22nd in Edison. I don't know any more details, but trying to drum up support in the school district and our fine city to, hey, I'm willing to put up five bucks right now to help support them. And I challenge the people of Linden, the school district, to help support this fine effort of these ambassadors as they go forward to represent Linden in this great charity event. I believe that says it all, but please, help support this, because I think it says a lot for the character of our schools and the way these girls are going to represent the school district and the city of London. Here's my five bucks. I wish to challenge anybody in the city to support them in any way, shape, or form that they can, and make this a great event for the charity. I already spoke to the mayor's wife. She is willing to blast it out if somebody can get the information to her, and she will blast it out. I don't know what that means. I'm not a tech person, but help. Please. Thank you very much. Who gets this?
There you go. Yes. All right.
Danny Orlid, 516 Carnegie Street, Linden, New Jersey. Hello, everyone. This was an incredible night to see the amazing, our amazing student, you know, to hear of all their accomplishments. And I'm not sure if all of you know, but Haggard got accepted to Princeton University.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes. But she already left, so. But we are all proud. We're proud of all our students. You know, they do amazing things, and I think sometimes, too often, you often hear the negative. You never hear the wonderful things that they do. And we have to celebrate our children, and I'm here. Mr. Hallen, if, for the softball team, just send me the information, and I will blast it. And I'm very good at it, and you know it. Anything that you do in the future, contact me, and I'm here to help. You know, anything that pertains to our youth, I'm here to help. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good evening, y'all. Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey. LEA president, LHS high school teacher, or social studies teacher. Tonight, the Board of Education continued its planning for the 2023-2024 school year. As we continue that planning, that march, that conveyor belt of life, I urge you to continue to use the resources you have available to you, the folks on the ground, the folks that the decisions that y'all make impact on a daily basis. My vice president earlier tonight spoke about the importance of bringing stakeholders to the table in the process of making decisions. As a public school, our stakeholders are the community. Our stakeholders are our students, and our stakeholders are our staff. Please, as you continue to make decisions, bring in their expertise. Reach out to the staff that we have here. Reach out to the folks that we serve. Talk to them. Ask them questions. Continue to keep those lines of communication open, so that way, as we make this. Continue to keep those lines of communication open, so that way, as we make decisions, we are moving in lockstep, we are working together and moving in the same direction. I urge you to do that. You all know how to find me if you want to ask questions. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. Seeing we have no one else here wishing to, desiring to say something, do we have anyone online? It's time to move forward to our next agenda item, which is new and unfinished business.
I do. First and foremost, I would like to know what is it that we would have to do instead of getting so much paper the way we get all the time and through our homes, if we could get these packets electronically?
I have no problem with giving electronic, no paper. But it would have to be at the direction of the board president, because there may be a board member who wants the paper instead of an electronic version. But from the staff's standpoint, I have no problem showing up here with a computer and electronic, and it wouldn't bother me at all. So I think it's just a collective decision, and a directive by the board president changes the procedure.
Any discussion?
I appreciate the paper when we come in, but the first reading, maybe the Tuesday, you know, the work session and any other paperwork, electronically would be great with me.
I personally think electronic for that, and maybe this paper here on the Thursday meeting does save a lot of headaches, instead of, and they keep on driving them out through everybody's homes. And if we could get the Tuesday one on, or that we get on Friday, we could get it electronically, I'd be happy with that. I don't know how you guys feel.
Would we have problems if there is additional stuff added between Tuesday and Thursday? Normally, our school district is very fluid. There is nothing that we may have it on Tuesday and Thursday, a lot more is added. And unless we get a paper of the addition on Thursday, I think, you know, I have tons of paper in my house, I know how everybody feel about that, but...
I need the paper on Thursday.
I like it, too. When I come here, because sometimes we come here straight from work, and mine is still in the house, and I know on different boards, what happens is that if you don't do it, a lot of people show up at meetings and there's nothing. You know, because they come right from work. So it has its advantages because of all the trees and stuff like that, but for me, I like it the way it is. I know it's really difficult with all the paper we have at home, right?
Yeah.
What do you think?
I think that the initial agendas that are sent out could be provided through email, which they are. We can alleviate the process of having you look come out and deliver the agendas. I also think that when we arrive to the meetings, there should be a printed-out agenda here for us.
I second that.
Agreed.
So would it be your direction to us, then? Let me just restate that so we know, because we've got quite the infrastructure to produce all of this, that on committee meetings, that we would send the material out on electronically. And of course, we might have a piece of paper there, but anything that was backup, extensive backup, would be electronic. And then there wouldn't be any board packets going out the Friday before the week, that would just be an electronic sending out of whatever backup material and the board agenda, all electronic. And then on Tuesday, we would have the yellow copy here on the table for you to work with. And on Thursday, we would have the pink copy, which is the final copy, and anything else that we need for backup or elaboration, we would put out to the email. Is that what we're hearing?
I think for the committee meeting, we'll still need a printout.
Yes, yes. But not the backup material, just the agenda.
Yes.
We could do that. They do have, they do even have programs called Board Docs and some other things that if, now that we know your mind of the latest approach, we may, we should be able to work this without any problem. It's easier on the staff, it's definitely cheaper than running all the paper.
And I know it is convenient. My only concern is that when you go to board meetings, to committee meetings, you only have one section of everything that's going on. And when I get my packet, I'm so excited that I could go through it and go over all the stuff that I may have missed. I am, I, even if I do a lot of work on my computer, when I'm reading, I like to read hard copies, but of course, I'm just one vote. So whatever the board decides, I would one hundred percent support. It is just that we could try it, you know, and see how it works, and if it doesn't, then we could go back to the way we doing it now. What do you guys think?
I think we should try it. Yeah, we should try it.
Yeah, we could try it and see if it works, and if it doesn't work, then we could...
I think the only reason that we really need the paper copies here during the meetings, which should probably be the only times that we really do need a hard copy, is because, one, we're not supposed to be, you know, on our phones or, you know, to be transparent.
Yes.
So then we would have the hard copies.
I'm gonna agree.
For that, for that reason, only, really.
So we'll make that happen.
Okay, all right.
Then I do have one more thing.
All right.
I would like to look up our dress policy for students and also teachers. Because if I see, when I drop my daughter off at school, I think the high school is probably the one that the dress code, between the middle school and the high school, the dress code does not look all that great. Okay? I'm not saying go back into uniforms. I said we should not be allowed to go into school with pajamas. That I do have a problem. So if we could look up the dress code, and I've seen some teachers throughout the system, when you walk out, also dressed down like that. I don't think that's a professional image, or just an image to be casual. I think it's way too casual. If we do have a dress policy, I would like to look, know what it is, and if we can enforce something, instead of having PJs at school, unless we do the pajama day, which we do have throughout the system, which I understand, but PJs every day, I don't think that looks good.
I will send all the board members the policy on staff dress, which is in the policy manual available online, but I'll make sure you get a copy. And the student dress policies are in the student handbooks. I will make sure that we isolate those down to just that item, and I will pass it out so you could start the discussion based on what's already been approved. Obviously, the board policy was by vote of the board, and if that policy for staff dresses to change, it would have to be a first reading, second reading, that process. The student dress codes are baked into the student handbooks, and they come forward for board approval as well. And that's the time that you would look at the discipline code, the student dress. We, with this board meeting, and all of the items that we approved this evening, just about everything is done that the schools need to redo their handbooks. The only thing that hasn't been done, and you'll see it on the next month's agenda, is the bell schedule for the middle school and the high school. And then everything else that the principals would need to update their policies would come forward. So I will certainly make sure that you have that, what the existing policies that have been board-approved look like, and then we could take the discussion from there. Thank you.
But my question is regarding our dress code. It appears that we already have good, a good policy in place for dress code. The question is, is our dress code being enforced?
No. No.
You know, because I cannot see us having a dress code at what is actually going on in our schools right now. So the question is, is that what do we do to enforce the dress code? Because if you change it, and you're not enforcing it, what are you actually doing? So if we have some ideas that we could make it more enforceable, I think we should make this suggestion so our students know that, listen, I can never understand is that every day we wake up, it's showtime, it's not a do-over. And I can't understand why people don't understand, students, parents, each and every one of us know, that when you step out the door, it is showtime. You can't do it over tomorrow. So we really need to start looking, really looking at our dress code, and if it's a good and solid one, we should find ways to reinforce it. Dr. Damasa, what do you think?
Well, you wouldn't get an argument from me. I'm the one that had school uniforms before I left, and we had everybody in the district in school uniforms, so I, I, I don't know what to tell you. It was, but it was the Board of Education that asked me to put people in uniform. It wasn't me coming in and saying, it was a considered opinion of the board, and we worked with parents, and there was a desire, we did a survey, and confirmed that this was a unified approach to how the students would present themselves in school. And that's the last time, I mean, I wasn't here the last nine years, but at the same time that we did that, that was the last time that I certainly touched the staff dress code, so that the staff wouldn't be at variance to the student dress code that was in place. So when I left here in 2013, everybody was in a uniform. And they, they looked nice, and it's, I always felt that if it set a tone, as the school being a place of business, and if you could comply people to wear a certain standard of dress, that wasn't onerous, but, but just, you know, a basic agreed way on how people look, and you could get people to comply with that, you might get them to comply with doing their homework, and getting them to comply with other things for the long hauler in their best interests. So I certainly wouldn't argue with you, but I can also say that changing and enforcing a dress code different than what it is could be one of the most explosive issues. It's not so easy as to say, well, you shouldn't look like that, and then there's going to be people at this microphone, and there's going to be people who disagree, who think that whatever standard we might come up with isn't the correct one. So I just don't, I wouldn't want you to think that if we squeeze down on the enforcement, or we look at the dress code and make it more restrictive, let's just say that, without saying what, don't think that it would be silent compliance. There will be people with opinions, strong opinions, and, and the board, when it decides to do something like that, as we did back when we went to school uniforms, everybody had to hold the line, because there'd be pressure all over the place to say, that's too much, that's too restrictive, you're making everybody conform, and you're making us look like this, or making us look like that. So it's a big deal, it's not a little deal. But certainly, if we don't want to go all the way to uniforms, but we just want certain things to not be allowed, I certainly have the capacity to go to the principals and put the hammer down and say, that won't be tolerated, follow the discipline code, and enforce it without reservation. But that, too, is going to have a lot of...
Pushback.
Pushback. But I have absolutely no problem. I got the whole district once into school uniforms, I could certainly handle a tightening up, but it's got to be something that we all want to do and believe in, so that we don't, the minute somebody says they don't like it, that we don't change it back to something else.
So what do we do next?
Well, I was going to give, as Sam indicates, he wants to see what the current policy is, and you could read and consider what you see, and if you tell me that, we think that's fine, but we just want to see better enforcement, then I will carry that forward with all the energy that I have. If you tell me, no, that's too loose, we want to see certain items not on there, then we could change the dress code for the staff and the board policy, we could change the student dress code immediately with a board vote, and then that'll be the new policy, whether we want to do it remaining this year, or we want to have it implementable with the start of the 23-24 school year.
Any other discussion?
What I have noticed, walking through the schools, are females wearing shirts that don't go all the way down, like they'll be way up top.
Crop tops.
Crop tops.
Crop tops.
And, and students wearing the hoodie, thank you. And it's not being enforced because, and I asked this question specifically, and it wasn't being enforced because they all do it. There are a lot of teachers, or hall monitors, or security guards at the doors who are hesitant, you know, to cause, to cause a problem. They just, they're trying to get everybody to go to class and, you know, do other things that students do just get by, you know, because there's so many students, and the hallways are just filled with students, and you have this whole crowd just buzzing by, so it's going to be difficult to pluck them, although they should not wear pajamas to school, because pajamas are for bed, absolutely. I'm just saying, you're right, Sam, but they should not be wearing house shoes to school, and they should be wearing sneakers or tennis shoes to gym so they can participate, because I also saw that. That's all I have, thank you.
I'm so sorry. Anyone else have anything to say?
I do, but not pertaining to this topic.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say pertaining to this topic? Because this is a very, very serious thing that's going on in our schools right now. It's like you're driving the car, and the kids are going home, and you're looking at them, and you're not sure if they even just left school, because the way of some of them actually look. And, and we really have to do something about it, you know? I know it takes a village to raise a child, and hopefully, this village could make a difference.
We used to call it dress for success. You dress where you want to be in life, but you dress now for that position, not wear pajamas or, you know, sweatpants or whatever, and you want to be a business, you know, you want to wear, get a job where you wear a suit, you need to start now wearing a suit. Okay, I'm done.
So, I see, like I say, first and foremost, yeah, let's look at the policy where we stand, because there are certain things that I believe are not professional out there. As time has progressed, and moving forward into the future, I cannot predict the future, but the way I see things going towards the future, it's a whole different background compared to what you used to seeing dressing professionally in the business world, to what we are allowing now. At first, you cannot show tattoos, you cannot have earrings on your nose, you couldn't, what is it, what else is it? The men couldn't wear earrings in the public place, and now, things have changed, and I'm all for change, but we have to have certain limits still, okay? Because there are girls out there, and men out there, that the girls do wear their no undergarment showing a lot. There are men out there now that their pants come down past... There are men out there now that their pants come down past. Okay, so, is it, no. And I know things have gone differently and things are going to continue going differently. But we got to show our students the way we want to get them ready for the future. Part of the future is dressing because when you go for a job, the first impression they look is when you walk in the first time. They're not seeing anything else until after they get to know you. So, if we're setting them up for failure there, then we're going to have problems. So, that's right. We look at the policy and whatever tweaks we have to have, we make the tweaks. And whatever we've got to enforce, we already have the backing of the administrators at that point.
I do want to add another, something that I just thought of while you were speaking. When these children go to college, they can wear whatever they want. It's not enforced there. I'm not saying they can wear pajamas to school. It's not what I'm saying. I'm just throwing that in there.
But it's true.
Just giving you something to think about.
Very true. But at the same token, they are paying a lot of money. And some teachers might say, especially when you're coming up to dress for the success at that point, they might end up saying stuff. But when you're paying money, I'm sorry.
I would like to say something.
They can wear what they want to wear, but it's how they wear it. They can wear what they want to wear. They can look nice or whatever they choose to wear. They don't have to have the bellies out. They don't have to have the pants down. We don't want to let them know that they can't dress, they can't do this, they can't do that. They can dress for success with a pair of khaki pants on. They can dress with their shirts on. You know what I'm saying? Let's not take it away from them. They have choices and options. Let's give them choices and options. So, therefore, if they want to come to school looking like whatever, there have to be consequences behind that. But if we just take it away from them, no, we're going to have pushback. We're always going to have pushback. So, let's give our children choices and options. Okay, we're going to look at the book and see what they can do, what they can't do, what they can't wear. Let them wear what they want to wear, but it has to be neat, pressed, ironed or whatever. Boy's shirts tucked in pants, girl's shirts belly, no. Just let them know, if you come to school looking like this, we're not accepting it. We're accepting it. But let them know that if you come to school again, you can't. Give them choices and options. That's it. Let's not take it away from them because they're people, they're human beings and they have opinions. And, you know, get them on social media because what they see is on social media. Everybody's wearing shorty shorts and this and that and this and that. They want to wear it to school. No, we can't do that, but give them choices and options. Let's not take everything away from them because we keep saying, we love our kids, our kids is this. Let's show them that we love you. You wear what you want, but remember, you're representing yourself when you walk in those streets. You represent yourself when you walk in that school.
And your family.
If you've got your shirt hanging out, if you've got your pants hanging down, what you going to say about yourself? Let's give them choices and options. Sorry.
Okay, Malaysia, you have something, another item you want to discuss?
Ms. Centron, are you sure?
I was just wanting to say, I would like to see the dress code enforced as well. And as far as with the uniforms, was that kind of deterred because of the cost? Is that why?
No, no. When I was here before, there were similar conversations like I just heard here. And there's a procedure. It's all written down, what we have to do if we would go to, it wasn't really school uniforms. It was a uniform standard of dress, which is a little bit different. And we had it so that the schools could pick their uniform. As I remember, School Four had, everybody had blue bottoms and white tops. Other schools had picked different colors. They had said no T-shirts, no jeans. But other things, there was a little bit variance between the schools. People said outright that they didn't think that we would ever be able to get the high school into the uniforms. And on the first day, we had 99.9% compliance. But we took a whole year to prepare for it. And we knew exactly what would happen. And there was no doing it on the fly. It was well-prepared. It was already in the manuals. It was, the parents were engaged on it. We've had forums. Everybody knew what we were doing long before it was time that we were going to put the hammer down. And I think that I was okay putting that effort because it really helped the culture of the schools, I felt. It made the feel inside the school different. So, but I don't want to pretend that it was an easy thing. It was a very, very involved interaction with the parents and the students. And it was done well because many times people say, well, who are you to tell me what's good taste and who isn't? So, we, by going to the uniform standards of dress, it eliminated a lot of arguments about a lot of apparel items because there was only so many. And then we had to have a fund, for example, that if somebody came into the school district and they had no money, let's say they're a refugee student, they have nothing, how do they go out and get those school uniform items? They have no money, they don't know anything. And so, we had to have, each school had to have a stock of items that we could give to them or have a source of funds from the PTAs and whatnot to help in those cases. So, it was a big deal. But, you know, I know, I heard that we don't want to go back to that, but we want to go wherever we want to go from where we're at. You know, I could put there, I could talk to the principals tomorrow and start cranking it through. But that's not really the best way to do a change by cold shock and just midstream start changing things. You know, the phone will be ringing off the hook. But if everybody understood it and they knew why and the parents bought in on it, then I think we can pull this off no problem. But at the same hand, if there are certain things that are absolutely outlawed, I have no problem starting tomorrow and just say, this is the way it is and hold people accountable for it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Malaysia.
Okay. So, I wanted to bring back up the student representative on the Board. We never touched on that after we had the Board retreat. We were to discuss having a student representative a part of the Board. Just wanted to know where we stood with that. And if we could bring it back up.
I heard it one time when Mr. Rivas was here. He asked me about it. We got him a number of policies from different districts of how they handled the student representative. And then I didn't hear it further. So, I'm saying this was probably around December. So, I don't know, I didn't have a policy to bring forward for first reading to deal with how we wanted to handle the student representative and what role we want them to play and what rules govern it because there were so many different ways to do it. So, that's where, that was the last that I knew about it.
I think that's a good idea. The only thing is with a student representative, would it be someone that was going to be here for every month? Or are we going to be utilizing students at different grade levels?
That's in the policy, which doesn't exist. We didn't norm the expectation so that we knew what that was going to be.
Can we view those policies that were sent out to Mr. Rivas? I'm not sure which committee would, they had that initiative.
Let me get him back dug up and I'll send out some options for that. I think we had at least three of them from surrounding districts who had done something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought they came from.
Before we move on to Board members' comments, there's only one other issue that I think that we could possibly discuss on New Business is vaping. What do we do about that in our schools?
Discuss what?
Vaping. We have a lot of problems right now, I think, you know, high schools.
Vaping is not authorized and subject to discipline.
Yes, because I went to a couple of events and I went to the bathroom and students were actually in there vaping. And it concerns me that, you know, maybe, I don't know what to do. I'm just, you know, as a Board member, I'm still on the outside looking in. And I also am concerned that we really have to listen to the people who are underground in the classrooms and what they do and what are their suggestions so that we could make our schools safe for everyone. So, I just think this is a conversation that need to be had on how we could, you know, find a way to solve this problem with, you know, what's going on in, especially in our high school with some of the behaviors of our students.
We do have it, an initiative. We've looked at three different products, vape detectors to put in the bathrooms. There's some that just sound off. There's others that will catch carbon monoxide for that. I think we'll bring those products up to the Security Committee next month. We've already done work and costed them out if we wanted to have systems in place to detect where vaping is occurring. Although, we know that even the smoke alarms work because we had a fire alarm at the Linden Academy set off in one of the student laboratories with smoke. So, we can augment that with detectors and of course, have essentially a zero tolerance policy where we catch people to go implement the discipline code.
Thank you very much.
There was a concern that was brought to me by one of the crossing guards at the high school. Not a crossing guard at the high school, but he was around the high school during school hours. And that, I believe it's Exxon, that's across the street. And they have the Amazon lockers there. He says they conjugate behind the lockers. And God knows what they're doing. So, I don't know, obviously Exxon is not part of us. And I don't know how far we as a school community can police that area. I don't know what's the jurisdiction there. Because if they're conjugating behind there, God knows what they're doing besides vaping or vaping. Still the same thing. So, I said, I will bring it up as this concern. I don't know what we can do, but I will bring it up.
Did he say what timeframe is this, between classes or at the end of the day?
I think it was in the beginning of the morning.
And at the end of the day, both. I've heard both.
When I was growing up, we really didn't have all these problems. It is so very hard and complex now to lead a school, to be in a Board. It's really, because as Ms. Pino said, we want to keep these students. We don't want to feel that, you know, freedom of expression and making them feel comfortable and at home in school is so important. But, you know, when we have parents and other students being uncomfortable with this situation, how do we move forward?
I believe we already have a policy against vaping and smoking and dress. It just comes down to enforcing it. And I don't know at what point after school or before school that we're legally responsible. Are we legally responsible for the children until they reach their home? Are we legally responsible then to provide some type of security or crossing guards or some type of system in place? Because I think if people knew what to do and knew the rules, then they would enforce it. But I don't know if anybody knows who's going to enforce Exxon. We trust that our children will go home or do what they're supposed to after school. I couldn't wait to get home after school.
Well, to answer your question, we are, for example, if some student gets in a fight on the way home from school, before they get home, that, it's been established that we have control over discipline for people on the way home from school. Whether or not that extends to us going onto somebody else's private property and enforcing our rules, that might be something that we'd have to check. That might be a little bit too far. But definitely, events that happen on the way home from school are under our purview in our Code of Conduct.
Seeing that no one else have any more comments, I would like basically to move to our next agenda item, Board Member Comments. Ms. Pino?
Good evening, everyone. This was a really good meeting tonight. Everyone came out. I want to thank everyone for their comments and their concerns. And as you see, Dr. Tomas and Dr. Bee has given you all your answers that you need. Maybe not to your liking, but they did answer all your questions. And I want to congratulate all the people that came, the teachers, the students and everything. We are so proud of you guys. It's really nice to see happy faces. Everybody's happy, everybody's smiling. A little friend here, she takes our pictures every time and we appreciate it so much. And then when she sees you in the street, she says hi to you. You know, we see you in Dunkin' Donuts, she's like, hi. So, you know, I'm like, oh, yeah, you ain't think I saw you, okay, you see? But it's really nice. And, you know, when people leave us, when people pass, it's really hard, you know? And we all been through a lot, you know? This year came in with a bang. And we've been crying and crying and crying, trying to say, what's wrong? What's going on? Can we make it better? Yeah, we can make it better. It's going to get better. It gets better with time. We just got to wait and see, you know? It's nice. And I have something. I went to, I was invited to School Four, okay? School Four invited me to talk to Ariel's class, Grade Five, Ms. Blunt's class. I had bracelets to give to them. And they made me a card. And I'm an educator, I'm a teacher, so, you know, I love stuff like this. They made me a card and they all signed it. And I said, thank you, Ms. Pino. And when I went there, they knew who I was. They stood up and they sang Happy Birthday to me. They knew it was my birthday. They sang Happy Birthday. So, you know, little kids, you know, I'm like, wow, y'all remember me? I was like, that's Ms. Pino. They didn't know Ms. Pino from a can of paint. They only knew Ms. Pino because the principal said, Ms. Pino's coming. So, you know, but it was really nice. I got to meet the children and they still are going through what they're going through. And they're going to go through it for a minute because that was their friend, you know? And I want to tell everybody, just reach out to our teachers and our friends and let them know that it's okay. There's a place for everybody to go if you need somebody to talk to. We're not going to just get rid of it just like that. Not here today, gone tomorrow year, but here today, gone today. Just take time out to say, hey, how you doing? Are you okay? Pick up the phone. It doesn't matter. My phone ring constantly. My phone has never rang so much before. My phone rings constantly, which is great because my people are checking up on me and I check up on them. So, let's check up on each other. It's okay. It's okay to cry. It's okay to laugh. And it's okay to say thank you. And it's okay to say hi when you walking down the street. I speak to everybody walking down the street. They think I'm crazy. I say hello. Who are you? I just say hello because you never know. I may make somebody's day. I want you guys to make my day. You really did. Coming out here today, it was great. Acknowledged, we acknowledged all the teachers and the students. It was beautiful. We can agree to disagree. It's okay. The world is not going to come to an end. Thank you for coming. I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you very much. You smiling, thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
I wasn't going to be that long today. But I'm going to did everything that Ms. Pino said, okay? And also, my condolences goes out to the family of Ms. Moore and Dawn Bavanio. And congrats to all our sports and individuals that were here today and our retirees that you work hard for what you're getting now. This is the fruit of your labor. You go enjoy it, drink on us. And also, I'm going to be pretty short. Like I said, I want to thank our staff. That without you, you are a big influence on these students' lives that are moving forward. Thank you, guys. Sometimes, it's like me and my job, I sometimes feel like it's a thankless job. But I know when you do the right thing for the people that you're doing, you go home with a great happy heart. And once again, I thank you for everything you guys do. And the PTA, don't forget, I was there also and I know what it is, okay? Everybody does have busy lives. It's hard to get involved, a lot of people. They may want to get involved, but can't get involved. But thank you also for what you do. Okay, so, without our staff, PTA, parents, we Okay, so without our staff, PTA, parents, we would not be anywhere the students are now. Thank you. Under.
Ms. Fleming?
I always first start off with the condolences for Dawn Bavino.
Viviano.
Viviano, my apologies. And Lydia Moore, our condolences. We all echo what Dr. Tomas said, and we're thinking of you. And congratulations to our children who were here tonight. I was so impressed, and sitting here listening to Sam, I was thinking, these children really are amazing. They're amazing. We only have some that wear hoodies or short tops, but we really do have amazing kids. And because we have amazing teachers, that's why, because they have parents and role models. So thank you to our teachers and the staff, everybody around them. We are their family, we're their network. And so thank you, everyone, from the parents to the teachers and the staff. Thank you for making Linden look so great. It was awesome. And I would also like to say, congratulations on retirements for Leon Devero, Carol Dennis, Lee Gaskin, Teresa K. Lynn. Congratulations, and I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. My apologies. And I would also like to just do one special thing. I'm going to tell you just a little something real quick about myself. I was a foster kid, so it was amazing being able to take a picture and hand a certificate to this special young lady. I had been taken from my parents at one and a half. I was one and a half. And my parents have nine children. We were all taken at one point, you know, some of us at one point. Anyways, saying that, I'm mentioning this because I think only like one or two people might know this, but I was raised with everybody. Kids would come in, and kids would go out, and you switch homes, and you live with absolutely every boy, girl, color, religion, everybody. We were taken to church. We were taught, we love, you know, every color of the world. But I'm just saying this because it is so important. I wasn't in a home with any of my brothers or sisters. None, not one, not one home. Out of nine kids. And I didn't have any clothes. And I didn't have, I couldn't afford to buy a uniform to go to school. When I got to school, I remember my very first teacher. She brought me into a closet and gave me a bag of clothes. I remember it like it was yesterday. I can remember the smell of it. That's how important that it is. I'm 47 years old now, and I remember my very first teacher in kindergarten because she cared about me. And she gave me something that I didn't have, that people take for granted on a daily basis. So my point of view and my perception of things might be different than somebody else's on uniforms or, you know, foster homes or giving certificates to these kids. Oh, my God. These kids are amazing. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be here, and thank you for allowing me to give that certificate today, and thank you for being amazing. Thank you. We know your worth. I'm finished. Thank you.
This is Ms. Armstead?
And my apologies, some of my notes are on my phone, so that's why I have it out. But first and foremost, I would just like to offer up my sincerest condolences to both Dawn Baviano and Lydia Moore's families. We are here with you, and we are thinking of you. So that's the first thing I would like to mention. The second thing that I would like to just bring up is that Linden has had a rough couple of months starting this year. You know, I felt like my start to the Board of Education was trial by fire because there was so much going on and so much emotions swirling around. So it was very, very nice to just come here today and finally be able to talk about somebody so happy and to celebrate our staff and to celebrate our students. I am extremely proud of what we have accomplished, and I just think that, you know, Linden is setting the tone with what we have to offer, and I'm just happy to be on this board, just represent all of you. I would also just like to talk about some visitations that I had, the opportunity to be a part of. And also, one of the lovely young ladies is also here. She was there. She, you know, coordinates our camera at the Board of Education meetings. And I got to attend Mr. Paskowicz's TV production class. They had a visit from Franklin High School. And I mean, these kids, they're talented. I wish that I could go more often. If I could spend all day there, I would. But they are just so talented. I got to watch them put together a mini project where they came up with segment ideas, and they were acting, and they were producing, and they were directing. And I was just so thoroughly impressed. I know our assistant superintendent, Paul Olivera, was there as well. So he got to witness how talented our Linden students are. I also got to participate in an episode for Women's History Month with them, and it was just a pleasure. I'm just like blown away by our students, and I cannot begin to tell you guys how proud I am of you. This was endearing to me because when I went to Rutgers University, I was a Journalism and Media Studies major, and I also was a producer for a couple of daytime talk shows for Meta. And it was just really, it was very, it was a great experience for me to be able to see you guys, express yourselves and have such talent. So thank you for giving me the opportunity. And the second thing that I would like to note and give thanks to is Ms. Donna Hernandez. I also got the opportunity to attend a PTA meeting, and it was my first PTA meeting. So thank you for welcoming me and allowing me to listen in to your concerns. They're doing a phenomenal job. They are having so many different events. They have tricky trays, which are open for volunteers. So just be on the lookout for all the different events that they're coordinating. They need all of our help. I plan to be in attendance and to volunteer to my fullest capacity. So just thank you for allowing me to sit in and hear your concerns. And then I also would like to just take some time to highlight Ms. Allison. She's on the girls' softball team. She also sent us a note about a fundraiser that they were having for autism awareness, which is near and dear to my heart because my two first cousins also have autism. So I was happy to support. So, you know, just shout out to this young lady for taking the initiative to reach out and to get some, you know, support for our fundraisers. I'm very proud of our students. You guys have no idea. I wish I could tell you more. And then also, the girls' softball team has a game on Monday at Rawaway High School at 4:00 p.m., which I plan to be in attendance of. So if you guys are free, you know, show up. I'll be there cheering for you ladies. So I can't wait to watch us kick butt. And that's all I have for you guys. So thank you.
Good evening, all. I would like to thank everyone for taking the time out of their busy schedules in order to attend our Board of Education meeting. The fact that people consistently attend our meetings shows the genuine concern for our students and staff members. I want to add my gratitude to the Linden High School girls' softball team for their invitation to the game that is being played on April 22nd while raising funds for autism awareness. Congratulations to the individuals who received awards this evening. Recognition is a reward in itself. I would also like to express my sincere condolences to the family and friends of the victims that occurred in the Nashville school shooting this week. Students should feel safe in a school environment, and this was a horrible tragedy, along with the other adversities that we've endured this past school year. In honor of Women's History Month, I would like to quote a well-known female activist named Rosa Parks. "You must never be fearful about what you are doing when it is right." Rosa Parks, an American civil rights activist best known for her pivotal role in the Montgomery bus boycott in 1955. The United States Congress has honored her as the First Lady of Civil Rights and the Mother of the Freedom Movement. Spring break will be arriving shortly, and I wish all the students and faculty members a great and well-deserved time off. Thank you again for your attention, and have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to also start out by giving my condolences to the Moore and Viviano families. It's truly sad when you have a passing. I'd also like to congratulate all of our honorees. You've worked so hard, and your work has not gone unnoticed. It was very well deserved. As Ms. Pino mentioned, I was, and Ms. Armstead, very happy and excited to see all of the decor walking in here. It just brought a sense of happiness back into this room. So thank you to who all have put this together. And again, congratulations to our honorees. I'd also like to wish all of the women in the district, and especially the women at this table, a happy Women's History Month. Continue to lead by example and open doors for the young women in our lives. It's an honor to be here, sitting with you all. Thanks, Sam. But this is great. I'll keep this very short. Let's continue to push the district forward by working together. Everything that we do here on this board as a team, we do it together. We try to make the best decisions for the district. We continuously say, we'll agree to disagree, but we also do come to an understanding knowing that we need to continue to push our students and that they are first. I would also like to say, "Have a good evening," and thank you all again for coming out tonight. It was a pleasure. Thank you.
It's getting late, so I'm going to be very brief. As I sat here tonight watching everyone getting awards, some thoughts came to me. Some of us will never be able to play basketball like Michael Jordan, dance like Beyonce, or be as creative as all the other entertainers out there. But each and every one of us has an opportunity to be a different kind of hero. As I look at my young lady, Erica Hernandez, she is one of my heroes for her commitment to our Board of Education. But we have so much work to do, so much more work to do. As I look here and I see people like Mrs. Hernandez and Mrs. Armstead, I ask myself, are they involved or are they committed? And I could say that each and every one of you sitting here, including the board members, are not involved with our school district. You are all committed because you always show up. For our family and our friends, thank you. And with that, I want to adjourn the meeting and have us all go home and have dinner. Have a good night, everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Rule called.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.